So we'll move on to item three, approval of the agenda. I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented. Sorry. Mr. Drury, do we have any changes?
No changes from staff.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero. Moving on to the next item, which is confirmations and presentations, tab number two. Fair's Chamber of Commerce update with Mr. Barry and happy belated birthday.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. Report is short, not a lot coming up. This is the time of year that things slow down. One big event upcoming, next Thursday night, December 12th, is an annual event every year. Seacoast Bank has a joint business after-hours holiday party, bring unwrapped presents for kids, and it's a joint between Eustis to Taverys, Mount Dora and all. It's a huge, huge party. It's a great, great fun party, so I hope you can be there. This year's going to be at their Mount Dora Bridge, which is the oldest green bank on 441. Other than that, the other notable date on your agenda is January 22nd, the monthly business luncheon, the first of the year, is going to be Mr. Drury is the speaker, so we'd love to have as many of you there as possible. And I will go ahead and give you the dates for all the key things for the rest of the year, so that you know when our golf tournament is, when the Taste to Taverys, Scavenger Quest, the gala, and those things, so that hopefully you can go ahead and put those into your calendars. Hopefully, all of them are going to stay that way throughout the year. The little that might change, we're waiting on the school calendar to be announced, and the teacher luncheon, that date might change if they don't come back like they did this year. And that was every good half for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item number five, swearing in by the attorney, disclosure of ex parte communications.
No court martial hearings today, ma'am.
So we'll move on to item number six, reading of all ordinances and resolutions into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three ordinances at first reading and one resolution. Ordinance 2019-19, an ordinance of the City of Taverys amending the boundaries of the city by annexing approximately .35 acres of land located at 15219 and 15221 Old U.S. Highway 441, rezoning said property from Lake County Land Industrial (LM) to City of Taverys Residential Multifamily (RMF2, RMF2), subject to the rules, regulations, and obligations ordained by the City of Taverys Council, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Ordinance 2019-20, an ordinance of the City of Taverys, Florida, amending the Taverys Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map 2020, providing for a change of future land use designation on approximately .35 acres of land located at 15219 and 15221 Old U.S. Highway 441, from county urban high density to city medium density, MED, providing for severability and conflicts, providing for transmittal, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance 2019-21, an ordinance of the City of Taverys amending Chapter 15 Pensions and Retirement, Article 5, Fire Department Pension Trust Fund of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Taverys, amending Section 15-108 Disability, amending Section 15-129 Reemployment After Retirement, providing for complication, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances and conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. And Resolution 2019-09, a resolution of the City of Taverys, Florida relating to the state revolving fund loan program, adopting the fiscal sustainability plan for the downtown CRA Stormwater Improvement Project, and an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Nurek. We'll move on to item number seven, the consentage event. Does anyone want to pull any of the tax from the consentage event?
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those close? Five to zero. We'll move on to item number eight, which is resolutions, which we have none under just resolutions, I believe it is, of their general government. So we'll move on to ordinances. The public hearing, we have two items for first reading, which are just entered into the record. The requests are first reading, they don't take public comment on tabs six, seven, or eight, but the second reading will be done in the future where we'll be able to take public comments. Moving on to second reading, we have nothing listed for this meeting today, so we'll move on to item number 10, general government, and on to tab nine, which is board appointments. There are seat vacancies and are expiring terms on the library board and police pension board. Specifically, the library board has one seat vacancy due to the resignation of Board Member Katherine Cressman. The vacancies for the remainder of the term expire in June 2020. The city advertised a vacancy in the Daily Commercial and the city website for applications. One application was received from Laura Lee Lawton. So without any ejection, I will go ahead and appoint Miss Lawton to that vacancy on the library board for the remainder of the term. Regarding the police pension board there, too, need a vote of approval?
Yeah, we make the appointment at the council.
So how do you need the appointment? I guess I'm just showing the answer. All those in favor of this one being awarded?
Aye.
So five to zero for the appointment. Moving on to the police pension board, there are two expiring seats on the police pension board, including one seat currently held by John Clark and one fifth trustee seat held by Eric Pilkin. The two seats are for two-year terms from November 2019 to November 2021. The city advertised the Daily Commercial and the city website for applications. At December 20th, 2019 quarterly pension board meeting, the board reappointed Eric Pilkin to the fifth trustee seat. The city council shall, of course, stay allowed ratified that appointment, see doesn't screw with act. So go ahead for Board Member Pilkin. All those in favor, both of the reappoint heads as well, but all those in favor of his reappointment?
Aye.
Five to zero for his reappointment. And then for the other open seat, the city received a request for reappointment from Sierra Fekada Foster Foster, main administrator on behalf of John Clark to the city council appointed seat. The city did not receive any applications, so I believe you're seeking the reappointment of Mr. Clark, is that correct? All those in favor of reappointing Mr. Clark to the board?
Aye.
Five to zero. I believe that concludes that tab, so we will move on to tab number 10. I don't see Mr. Sardar. So should we move forward without him, or should we table it? Before? So we're moving on to tab number 10, which is plastic straws.
So previously at the October meeting, Mr. Sardar, our audience should have heard, asked if this council would be interested in banning plastic straws from its parks. He was told that he would need to meet with the city administrator and that it could be looked at and agendaized at a future meeting. He did make the appointment with me, I met with him, he provided information regarding other cities around Florida that have banned plastic straws. I advised him that it would be several months before I could work it into an agenda, and so I worked it into December, this meeting December the 4th. I advised him that it would be on the agenda December the 4th, and that he would be welcome to have three minutes or so to talk about his desire to have plastic straws made man from the city. I provided some information as to other cities in Florida that have banned plastic straws, also pointed out that if you head in this direction, sometimes a grow to banning other plastics, like plastic cups, in the entertainment district, which has an ordinance that specifically requires beverages to be in plastic cups. If the board did decide to move forward with banning plastic straws and plastic cups, we would need to change that ordinance. If the board decided to move forward with banning plastic straws, plastic cups, we of course would develop an ordinance, there would be several, two readings, we would be meeting on it a couple more times, all of them being invited to comment on that concept. At this time, you have the information I think you need to discuss liberate, whether you want to ban plastic straws or cups or not, and I believe you've got some speakers who'd like to speak on that as well. If you have any questions from staff, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, and I'll go ahead and open this up for public comments. I have Denise LaRotta.
Denise LaRotta, Royal Harbor. I know plastic is really bad for the environment, and as you all know, I cruise a lot, and the garbage, the plastic that you see in the ocean is absolutely incredible, and I think there needs to be some control taken for it. I really don't have an opinion, though, about plastic straws. I know there are some environmentally friendly materials that don't cost much more for a business than plastic straws. I mean, you can get glass ones and metal ones, and there's lots of options, and if you, you know, look into that, that's fine, but my larger concern is for the entertainment district. Since they have had this ordinance in place for plastic cups, I would hope that if you go along these lines, that there's some, a lot of consideration taken into not making their businesses incur any additional expenses on that. And then I would also wonder about, I don't know what kind of bags, prompt shop uses, but if they use plastic bags, I would think that maybe if you go down their throat, somebody's going to come back and say, "We don't need plastic bags either." So please consider all of those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaRotta. Next, our hat and Miss Ayton.
Drinking from a plastic cup. Stirred in a hallway.
That's good.
My name is Diana Ayton, 704 North St. Clair Abrams Avenue, Taverys. I agree with Denise about the same, the plastic, the cost involved. Me, at the ranch, we prefer paper straws, but I think this should be optional. I walk around with plastic cups, and I just don't know what the meaning will be behind the definition if we ban the plastic cups and straws, whereas, who places that? Is it just that the restaurants that serve the drinks would not be able to provide plastic straws? I don't know, somebody can answer that for me, but I'm kind of like, it's getting entrenched into government taking a place in what we do. I think we should just table this and leave it for maybe another time, or look at being an optional. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Say, before you walk away, ma'am, you said out at the ranch, you guys have gone to paper straws instead of plastic straws, is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you tell me what the price difference is for those?
No, I don't have that available, but I can get that for you.
Can you tell me what the quality differences in those?
We use those for our consumers. I personally haven't used it, I don't use straws at the ranch, but I can get that with you on that one if you'd like me to.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Yocum.
Why don't you let he request it?
I don't have it yet, so you're in.
Vance Yocum at 12619 Milwaukee, Taverys. Yes, I also drank from a plastic cup out there, and it worked pretty well, and I have used plastic straws cups walking around the grounds here, as well as in Eustis and in Mount Dora, and so they're helpful to have. I did bring an example, in case you forgot, of plastic straws. This is courtesy to Mr. Savatini, Representative Savatini. I do agree, though, because I read a lot of different things, and one of them is about the issue of plastic and the oceans and everything else, and the plastic doesn't degrade, it is an issue. And I would encourage you that maybe, a couple things. One is that if you want to do something, one, I do not believe in regulations and putting in a process where then Mr. Lubens has to hire two code enforcers to go around and check for plastic straws, and everybody's good. But I would think of it like you have these flower festivals and other things like that, where they don't mandate that you decorate your lawn, and, but what they do is they come up with an award or some sort of an incentive program where they give, you know, recognition to people who do implement something that does this. That means it isn't a regulation saying you have to do it because we want to maintain our freedoms of choice, but you can come up with a program to do that as an alternative. There also are a lot of emerging technologies around the world, I see them reported on BBC, in different alternative straws made out of different materials that do last long enough, as opposed to some that apparently are failing. The basic paper straws, they don't always last very long, but there are others that are being developed from other materials. I think, I keep thinking one was made out of rice, but they last long enough that the consumer can use them for one-time use. So with that, if you do want to look at it, I would say never regulate something from being used, but instead provide some sort of incentive process and maybe do some research and provide some alternatives that seem to work. Thanks.
I believe next we have Mr. Sardar. And I just see Angel Freeman.
David Sardar, Portland Park, Florida. You know, I believe in recycling. Plastic is a real concern. I was at Orlando County Commissioners meeting yesterday, Jerry Devon, the mayor, and by God, they're going green, they're following exactly what Buddy Dyer has done, banning plastic bags. One time, Styrofoam contained plastic straws at the Amway Center where the Magic Play at the Capitol Stadium, where the Orange Bowl used to be played, and at the Phila Center across from City Hall. After I got done public comment, Jerry Devon said, he was so happy to see me again, he goes, "I'm surprised." And by God, they are doing the same thing on my phone, I have the big screen, they're going to ban plastic bags. One time, Styrofoam contained plastic straws in the Vegas Bayou in the county of Oregon. The restaurants are following in line, and by God, they're going green down in Oregon County. We ought to do the same thing in our county. I read, I'll do the environmental legislation today, affairs. They are very green. SeaWorld is listening to me. They're very green. Well, you know, I got the cards of Mayor Buddy Dyer right here, and I got a beautiful calendar. Who's the mayor now? I'm Man of Rhodes, I got a beautiful calendar for you from Buddy Dyer's office, and I specifically talked about a bottom bill about the governor, and they're listening to me, and they know that you guys are taking up hope right now, our discussion. John Drury was saying, you know, he's a pilot here in the sea play capital of the world, but I want you to know, even Jerry Devon signed my bible right there at the bottom. God bless Jerry Devon. They're going green, and you guys ought to go green, too. You know, it's what the world needs. I mean, you know, plastic bans and bags are concerned. In Australia, they've been, India, they had plastic bags, and I'm towards pushing that for the governor. We need that for our state, California, Hawaii, Puerto Rico have already done, and that's just things that need to be done, because what we can do today can improve all our futures for our kids. See, you know, we're all here for a little while, but we need to take action when? Well, the time is now. The time is now. You know, a bottom bill, look how many states have it, Iowa, Connecticut, Hawaii, Maine, Michigan, New York, Miami, Michigan, Oregon. You know, we need to do steps. In Florida, we're way behind in environmental issues, and we need to step up to the plate for our kids' future. And, you know, they're banning plastic straws in Volusia County, not in Miami. And by God, we can do it right here in Central Florida, and you guys could be the leaders, the gladiators, to show for our kids' future. I was at an elementary school in Leesburg today, there's a child taking environmental report, and she's so concerned, she does not use plastic straws. I've got a guy at a bar in Bakers at Gators, he doesn't leave straws for the villagers at his bar unless they ask.
Mr. Sardar, you're running out of time.
Oh, no, can I give you the calendar?
You can leave the calendar over here in the corner.
And I have the mayor's card of the city of Royal Harbor, I'd love you to have that. Mr. Sardar. Mayor, God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Sardar. All right, I believe that closes public input and ready to cancel. Anyone have any comments or questions? All right, we'll jump in. Mr. Stevenson?
I've been through some pretty powerful sermons here in the city of Taverys. That dude has some passion. If that was the deciding factor, that was compelling. I love the idea, I don't know how it would be implicated, like, how would be implemented? I don't know how you'd really do that, because I believe that it would go from straws to cups to, I think Styrofoam's just as bad, isn't it? I think everybody's booing on Styrofoam also, so you couldn't go from plastic cups to Styrofoam. Cups, I don't know what we would do in our entertainment district without the ability to provide someone a cup, can't tell them they can walk up and down the street, and I don't have the ability to do that. So I don't really know practically how that would work out. I wonder, honestly, what the cost is. I think we do need to look beyond ourselves, I think we need to worry about the oceans, we need to worry about the future, and it's short-sighted, it's myopic for us to think that everything's okay if we just make it through this for ourselves. I think we need to look beyond ourselves. So I agree with that thrust of the argument, but I wonder what the real implications are. I wonder if the city, if the businesses would be behind like an incentive program, like Mr. Yocum suggested. But really, truly, I'm most curious about the numbers and what the alternative is. If you can't have plastic and you can't have Styrofoam, what would you have? Those are my questions.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Sardar, I respect your enthusiasm, you know, you make some compelling points, and, I mean, I'm all about protecting the environment, but, you know, I got to agree, you know, I just, I just really don't want to see this, you know, more government regulations. You know, the city is doing, you know, what we can, and I would like to see, maybe, you know, we have our downtown events, I don't know, I would, you know, be for putting in something in our vendor's agreement, you know, not, not telling them they have to ban straws, but, you know, just give them the idea that, you know, the city of Taverys is, you know, looking out for the environment and just, you know, encourage them to, you know, go green if at all possible, but right now is, you know, isn't really something that I could see supporting.
Ms. Boydus?
I appreciate Mr. Sardar's passion. It's admirable. I think we're not ready for this at this point, and I think it'll be an incredible expense to our businesses and enforcement, and putting something to paper that we cannot enforce is a huge concern. Why do it?
Ms. Sardar, do you want to comment?
Well, I mean, I like the idea, everyone knows that I'm green here, I like green stuff. I don't think there's any way to enforce this, I mean, when I was a kid, I used to drink on paper straws, I remember that, but I just don't think there's any way that we could, I don't think we have a plan in place that we could do this at this time. I wouldn't mind, you know, we're not going to waste staff's time, but maybe as council members, we can maybe do a little research and come up with something more defined that could be enforceable, that wouldn't be incredibly costly.
Well, I really like the idea of a bottom bill and a handbill, but that's something the state has to do, that's really a little beyond what we're able to do for you, which was a great incentive program, because if you get money back, why not? As far as regulating plastic bags, I think that's really something that the county would have to take a lead in, so it'd be uniform, because you go to $1 general or one, public spends one rule, then you go to the next one, it would end up being very confusing for a lot of people. As far as private business forcing them to shift, I think that should be more of a voluntary thing, and if we can come up with some type of incentive or cost-effective program for businesses to switch over, that would be wonderful to give them that option, because I think most would if they were able to. So if you can find us more information about alternative products that are similarly priced so that there's an incentive for them to switch, I think that would go a long way with everyone, but from what I see, it doesn't look like we're willing to move forward with anything at this point, but we would need more information, and we would welcome it. Does anyone want to make a motion on this topic?
So we have a motion to deny, moving forward with it at this time, developing an ordinance in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's five to zero. Which brings us to tab 11, council policy on public input during meetings.
I have presented to you an update to the policy on public speaking. There's been a new law that passed for a statute 286.0114 that requires boards to develop policies for public speaking so that everyone gets an opportunity to speak on every item. So your policy that was done for 2013 has been replaced with a new policy that I've attached for your consideration. The highlights are the three-minute rule remains the same, we're expanding the three-minute rule to five minutes for people who represent other people. We are requiring that if you have a jump drive, that you want to present to the public, that it be presented to the staff so that the IT department can look for viruses and make sure that it doesn't have viruses before it goes into our system, and that that be done prior to the meeting. Not a lot has changed, other than expanding from three to five minutes for people who represent others, making sure the jump drives are presented in a timely manner. With that, policy's before you, I think there's some public input on public speaking. Back to you for that process, and I'm here to answer any questions on updating our public speaking policy.
Well, we'll move on to public input, we have Mr. Santoro.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Drury, city staff, Mr. Williams, Gary Santoro, Royal Harbor. I really don't have any heartburn over it, but I have two questions. Number one, so we are not going to require, you're not going to require us to fill out a form to speak on a public comment?
You would be required to fill out the form to speak on a public comment. Same as what we've been doing.
We really haven't been consistent with that, but that's okay. My next question is, is that you're saying that all these forms have to be turned in before the gala hits. How's that going to work?
We use that as the policy that other cities have used. Basically, when the agenda is posted on Friday, you would have Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday to review the agenda and decide what item you wanted to speak on, and you can fill out your form, come here 10 minutes early and put it in that box, or five minutes early and put it in that box, or you can email the clerk any one of those days and tell the clerk when you'd like to speak on the form, on what issue. So that would be the policy. We do recognize that there are some people that arrive, pick up the agenda, read it while the meeting's going on, and then decide they want to speak on an item. I think the chairman or the mayor has the flexibility to accept those, and the policy has been accepting those even though they come in after the meeting's started.
And I understand that, and I can respect that, and I have a problem with that. I do have a problem having to fill out one of those forms for public speaking, because sometimes there's things that are said under public comment that somebody, myself included, would want to get up and speak about what somebody has said or what something has happened during a meeting, and you can't do that, you know, if you have to fill out one of those forms. I believe that public speaking should be just after somebody wants to get up and speak, they raise their hand, and be recognized by the chair. Just my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Santoro. We'll move on to Ms. LaRotta.
Denise LaRotta, Royal Harbor. Obviously, some of the thoughts that Mr. Santoro just had are going on right now, because you've just got more requests to speak up there. John, I'd like to thank you, I know I had talked to you about this issue in the past, and I was very concerned about jump drives being given and possibly infecting the systems of the city, so I appreciate you looking into that and considering it. However, I'm opposed to public speakers like myself or someone in the audience bringing in a jump drive and making a PowerPoint presentation to you all for any reason, I just don't think it's necessary. I can understand the necessity when you're having a builder, developer, consultant, you know, someone that's going to be doing business with the city, obviously there's a lot of issues there, and you want to hear and possibly see the diagrams and so forth, but other than that, I just think that having it... But other than that, I just think that having it submitted by someone like myself before the meeting and then having to have IT check it is just an expense that the city shouldn't have to undertake. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lorada. Next I have Mr. Cornet.
Thank you very much. I'm probably out of step here. The new resolution, and I guess what I'm opposed to is those who come to speak here to you for whatever the subject, and they don't live here, and they don't vote here, or their subjects are irrelevant, out of touch, or suggestions for how you should run the council, run the city. Not long ago, there was a long list presented that Mr. Jurey took notes on and offered to one of the participants that he would answer those requests or those concerns in writing. I would think that that should go on the other direction, that some of those long requests and comments and criticisms that you get that I think are out of bounds should come in writing regardless of the speaking coming forward here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornet. The next I have, Ms. Aitken.
Diana Aitken, 714 North St. Fair, Abrams Avenue. With this draft policy that I've read here, I think maybe it could be changed. I am against having to fill out if or for public speaking, audience to be heard. I think when we ask for the audience input, I don't think that that should have to be turned in each time. Sometimes I like to get up and talk a lot, maybe not so much, but I just think having to fill that out beforehand, sometimes I'm late. And I just don't feel like I should have to fill out each time before the gavel hits. It should be at the discretion, I guess, at the mayor. One thing I'd like to see changed, I know that, you know, we've got to turn it up for it, it has our name and address and information on it, but sometimes I have questions during some of the tab items that I may not have turned in at the time. And I remember when Robert Wolf said on the council how he always called upon the people that had filled out a sheet to be spoken to. And then he would also ask if there was anybody else in the audience that had wanted to speak on it. Now, I think that would be a nice procedure to do, even though you don't have one, I may have a question that I did not have before, that I may present an idea or a comment. That may be one way to rewrite it as a procedure. I came in late. As far as the three minutes per person, I think if we're going to have it three minutes even for a person or group, I think it should be the same across the board, whether you're giving three or five, everybody should have an equal opportunity where that there's, because I can come up here and say I'm speaking for a group and get that extra time in. As far as the timekeeper, I don't know. Does that state that you would have to be the timekeeper? Oh, okay, gotcha. I like that. Because I was wondering how you're going to pay attention and give all the attention if you're having to keep time also. Oh my gosh. Okay, my time is up.
No, I disagree.
Okay. And I agree with Denise about the IT being presented at the last minute, some of the public comment on PowerPoint. I think that that needs to go away, that it should be strictly to like our developers or something that's on the agenda, that if it's presented beforehand, the cost involved in that, I agree on that. But we need our public comment. As a resident, I want to be heard and sometimes I don't feel like I always have the opportunity. And sometimes when I get back to the seat, I'm like, oh yeah, I forgot about that one. Like the city recycle, the recycle bins. I mean, we're adults here and if we have plastic, we should dispose of those plastics properly.
We stay on topic here.
Okay. Anyway, thank you so much and hopefully we can maybe draft this and make some changes on that and bring it to a vote later time. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. I believe that we... Mr. Sargent?
David Kerner reports to you again. I met many council meetings and most of them have a public comment card. I think the only one that does it is Lady Lake. And I want you to know, I think it's a good idea, you know, who's going to speak. Look, you know, Peter, they'll hand a public comment card to your clerk to bring it to you. That's well accepted. There's a three minute timer that some offices have and then the bell goes off and, you know, you either let the person keep speaking or you stop them right there. In Orlando, a county, they have a three minute timer, but they have a three minute timer in Eustis, I believe also. And there's public comment cards at all these offices except for Lady Lake. I meant Lake County during the meeting, and they have a public comment card you turn in. You know, it's just common sense. You get to know what the people are speaking about, what agenda they're talking on. It gives you an idea what you're going to be throwing at them. The only city I know of that does it is Lady Lake. And I've been to Wildwood, Lady Lake, Fruitland Park, Leesburg, Tewerys, Mount Dor, Eustis, Orange County, Lake County, Sucker County, they all have a public comment card. You know, it only makes sense. One city, Lady Lake, does it. You know, and my God, just to let you know, the whole restaurants are going green following what the cities are doing. So, you know, they're doing it down there. You know, people don't like it, but the restaurants are following it. Like even in Fruitland Park, there are people that are, you know, restaurants that are banning plastic straws. You know, I know that's off the title, but I wanted you to know, even the restaurants are following, going green, what the cities are doing down in Orlando. You know, they're very progressive. They got bicycles taking them out and stuff like that.
We have to stay on topic. Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to Mr. Yocum.
Yes, Yocum. You know, there are a lot of apps you can get and you can get an eight inch tablet and you can put them on it, you can set it right up there, you can see the countdown. This one, I started at three minutes and 30 seconds because I figure I'm going for five. I'm speaking for all the rest of the people that can't speak here today, so...
You have a brain, so use it wisely.
All right, use it wisely. I think you ought to, I agree with Diana, I think you ought to put her in charge of the public input and controlling the timer. One question I have, which wasn't clear, is it kept saying you can submit either PowerPoint or other things, but it didn't say can you do that by email? And I would think that that would make sense if you are going to have that requirement. Secondly, is that if you're going to have a PC and you're talking about, oh, the IT department has to check this and everything else, you just get a separate cheap laptop and you just have it connected. It's firewallled off from everything else. It'd probably be helpful to be connected to the internet in case somebody wants to show you a website, but I think that makes sense. You can get these laptops, Chromebook or something like that for very low cost and just dedicate that to this and put it up here. There are some like county, that's what they do, you got a laptop right there in front of you. The, it said something about the papers presented during the discussion, like if I have a handout, I have to give it to her like several hours earlier or days earlier? I disagree with that. I think that I should be able to come in if I have a handout or something that I want to be handed out, I bring it in and I give it to the staff and they pass it around. And by the way, I was at Mascot last night and they have five minutes as their rule for all public input. And that's pretty much it. Get a cheap tablet, use that with a timer on it. Have a cheap Chromebook or something like that that you can use that isn't hard fired into your internet, I mean, into your, into your network so that you don't have to worry about viruses and can leave it as that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Yocum. I believe that concludes our public input. So I will close public comments and we want to cancel. Councillors, anyone have any comments or questions they'd like to kick off with? Mr. Stevenson?
Okay, just, just to get things started, it's shocking for me to sit up here and listen to the leader of the fiscal rangers ask the city to spend money on a laptop. Cheap laptops. But I do think that he brings up a very good point. One of the things that I see as a real problem here is when we start talking about we just get five minutes because you're going to have someone coming here, if you guys can think of anyone, and say come in with their wife, declare themselves to be a group, whether that's successful or not. At some point, they're going to succeed, whether they have two, three, four, five, six, whatever that number winds up being. And then the person who's here with two and they didn't get to get the five minutes as a group, but the person with three got to get the five minutes. So I think if we're going to like talk about word group, I think we should define the word group and say like in order for you to qualify as a group, you have to have this minimum number of people or something. Or, you know, he was trying to make a joke, but he brings up, I think, a valid point. Everybody's going to try to be a group on some esoteric level, if not on an actual physical level, by bringing folks here just for that purpose. I doubt it would shock me to see people do that. When it comes to the forms, I think we've always had this like policy, as long as I've been here, we've always, Mr. Shenger and now Ms. Bogus, they let folks come up pretty much whenever they want to come up. You know, folks bring it up while we're talking or while it's being presented and such. So I don't see any reason if that's what we're going to do, let the public know. I'm all about people being able to give their input. I don't think we're in this alone. I think we're just mirrors of five people that have been selected to represent everyone, all of our neighbors. I want to hear from my neighbors. I expect, and not only do I want, but I expect folks to help me make these decisions, so I want to hear as much as possible. So anything that would be accommodating in that regard, I'm a big fan of that. I think if you look under procedures and rules, point number two says for items on the agenda, Mr. Santoro, for items on the agenda, and then it says accept the audience to be heard agenda item, then you have all those requirements of turning in a form and all that. Not a big fan that it happens to be turned in by the click of the gavel and all that. I'm with you on that. But I think that anyone can come up during the audience to be heard. I don't think you're restricted from doing that by the forms. And as a matter of procedure, I don't think we've ever stopped. I've never seen anyone be stopped from talking. I've seen someone be stopped from going 12 minutes while they were talking. When it comes to the PowerPoints, I, again, I was looking through it on the final page of it. It says visuals such as PowerPoint presentations, there probably should be a comma after that, but are limited to three minutes. I don't think anyone's saying that you can't send an email in to suffer the same scrutiny that, what do you, what do you call this thing?
Thumb drives.
Thumb drives. I think it would suffer the same fate as a thumb drive. So, real quick, all four people being able to give as much input as possible, not a big fan of if you haven't done it by the time the gavel clicks. I've never seen that work out in reality in here. I think anyone should be able to talk during the audience to be heard part. I'm okay with PowerPoints even if it's by email. And then that's funny that he would ask us to buy a laptop. The one person I would never expect to hear that from.
Anybody else in council wants to speak on this topic?
My only concern is the five minutes as Roy said, a group, defining what a group is is important. I think if you can't get your point across in three minutes on the topic, then you may as well not, not use the three minutes.
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of the five minutes. You know, that just brings up more issues. So I would like to see it remain just the three for everybody involved. I do like the comments Mr. Kerner brought up, I don't know if we could ever implement that, but I do like what he said. And then, you know, this isn't the only time that you can communicate with council members. We're all accessible. I mean, we've got phone numbers. So email, you can always contact us anytime. I know, you know, I pride myself on answering everybody's emails and phone calls, so I'm always open for any conversations that anybody'd like to have. That's really all I have there.
Vice Mayor Piston?
Well, yeah, I guess I've been here too long because this has always worked fine and suddenly we've been having all these changes and I'm trying to understand them because these meetings to me have always run so smoothly. As far as the group, well, I'm all about timeliness. I like to save time. So if two people want to come in here and consider them a group, well, we've just saved one minute, let them speak for five because if both of us spoke, that's six. So we've saved a minute there. As far as PowerPoint, if a developer can come in and show us all these pretty pictures of what they'd like to do, I think the residents have a right to come in and show us what they would like to show us. I think that should be their right because a developer isn't going to show you the pictures of maybe what he is going to destroy that's already there. And I think the homeowners or the people who live by something that's possibly being developed, I think they should have the opportunity to come in here and show. So if we have to buy a laptop, as Mr. Yocum suggested, I would say that's what we need to do because I think they should have, they should be given that right also. This is their home, this is where they live, and I'm going to respect that as much as I'm going to respect the developer who comes in. So I think they should be given equal, equal time there. As far as at the end, I, we've always had the people fill out, well, not initially, but a few years into being on the council, people have to come in and they have to fill out what they'd like to speak on. And sometimes you don't know you want to speak until someone says something that you don't like. Or maybe the council says something and they're going in a direction that you never imagined they'd go in and now you want to speak on that item. So I don't like it having to be done before the gavel. And then at the end, for public input, it's just what it is, audience to be heard. I don't think you should have to fill out anything to be audience to be heard. So I'm not sure where all these changes are coming from, if this is coming down from the state of Florida or if someone's just bored and decided we need to do something different. I just don't know, but we've run pretty darn smoothly here. Every once in a while, you get someone who doesn't want to stay within the guidelines and you just sit them down, you know, respectfully and say your time's up and we move on to the next one. So there's a lot of hootie do over, not a whole lot to me.
All right. Well, my opinion is the same as most people, that what is a group, we should probably define that to make it clear to the public. And additionally, as far as PowerPoints or any other technological presentations, I think that developers and private business should be treated the same as public and everyone held to the same deadline. I do know that IT staff does need to review all that before they connect it to the network using city computers. So unless someone can provide their computer and hook into a public access Wi-Fi, they can get to, which I don't understand how to do that and we can't even get that to work all the time correctly. So that would be something that I would have to follow through with IT to see what is even feasible with the equipment we have and the Wi-Fi network we have set up. So I'd like to get more feedback from IT before we make any decisions, holding their feet to the fire. And as far as I can tell with the draft policy, item two says that you do not need to fill out anything for audience to be heard. It's all other items on the agenda. I believe, is that correct?
Right.
That note, would anyone like to make a motion? Either accepting the policy as stated or suggesting changes for the council to, city to look into?
Can I make a couple of comments? You know, what, the council currently has a policy that has most of this in it, was adopted in 2013. There was a state statute that came out and changed things for the state of Florida. And so cities have spent the last two years trying to comply with that law, which gives everyone an opportunity to speak on an item before this board. One of the goals is to have a judicious orderly meeting. You are the representative of the people, you're doing people's business. And you have to remember that sometimes you'll have 150, 200, 300 people out here. So raising your hands and, you know, picking people to come up, sometimes you'll have 30 people, sometimes you'll have 200 people. So we have to, we're developing a, we're updating the current policy so that you can run an orderly meeting in all sorts of different scenarios. This wasn't just created from nowhere. We researched 20 cities, three counties, picked what we thought was good, got rid of what we didn't think was good, watered it down where we thought it would be more appropriate and all of that. So work went into it, just so you know, and other cities are doing this for a very good reason, so that your meetings ought to run in an orderly way and you can go through reason, so that your meetings ought to run in an orderly way and you can go through it. And I think as the council member Rory Fister said, the last 12 years, it's worked pretty good. So, and that's the way we've been working. The issue of five-minute, three-minute rule, I hear what you're saying there, I think limiting it to three minutes is the easiest thing to do and would work just fine. The chairman has the ability to give people more time. When you're performing your, when you're rehearsing and getting ready to present for this council, maybe everybody should plan on around three minutes because the policy says that. But it gives the chairman flexibility and certainly council members can ask questions. That's not taken away from the three minutes. You ask a question, they answer a question. So determining and defining what is a group and what's not a group, practically impossible. That would be very impossible to do. There's people that come here and say, I represent all the people in the Shirley Shores area. And then you find out, well, you really don't. There's some people that actually you're not representing or you are. So figuring it all out would be kind of impossible to do. So coming up with just three minutes for everybody and then giving the chair flexibility makes all that issue as well. One of the issues we've had is people come up and want to bring things up on the screen that maybe are not age appropriate. We do have children here and nobody's ever seen it. And up it goes and we've had no ability to reveal it. It's happened in other cities and some would argue it's happened here. So allowing anybody in the public to just come up with a laptop, put up whatever they want, and then us having to go and decide whether it's appropriate or inappropriate, I've had people put donkeys up there, want to put donkeys up there two meetings ago. I've had people who put people that aren't fully clothed up there not too long ago. So I think in order to run a judicious meeting that's G-rated, that is on topic, we would want to have some reasonable rules so that you don't find yourself in an embarrassing situation on the internet or whatever on what happened and why it happened and what could have been done to prevent that. So that's one of the reasons many cities have created a set of policies where those things that you look at. Malware is huge, it's going all over the place. So look it up, Naples just got hit with it, lost $100,000, getting infected, having people from foreign countries, going into someone's computer, going into someone's computer, and then off we, off, off, it goes. Real estate offices, governments are losing a lot of money. And if you look it up and you research it, it's billions of dollars. We have to protect the people's money. We have to protect that from ever occurring here. So we, this policy does that, you know, it protects the city from, from that as well. Forms or no forms, you know, that's a good, good question. We've had forms to have a process for people to think about what they want to speak on, how they want to speak on it and get it to, to the board. 200 people are out there, their all hands are up there, the chairman's trying to pick which person's speaking next and, you know, meetings are going to go along as you determine who's got their hand and which one you're picking up. Having a form filled out, gentlemen said, just about everybody city does that, it helps you do the people's business in a respectful and decent way while giving the public an opportunity to have public input, while protecting the council from having inappropriate things go up on screens or malware go into our software. I believe you have a policy that's before you that needs one tweak from three minutes, from five minutes to three minutes for everybody. Continue to give the chairman the opportunity to extend that. I also think there's flexibility that people don't fill out the form in a timely manner. The chairman can recognize a person or two or three or five or 50 or 100 and let them speak. You have that ability in this current policy to do both those things that concern you. So those are my comments as you deliberate which way you want to go on this item. Thank you.
Does anyone want to make the motion or have any further input?
Yeah, I just want this over with. So I'll make a motion that, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion that we follow this, but make it be three minutes across the board and leave it, the mayor has discretion to run the meeting as they feel important. And that you can present, you can present something, but it has to be presented ahead of time if you want to do something where it can be checked out before it is put up on our screen. That's what I like the motion to say. You could have a PowerPoint, but you're going to have to have it in here soon enough so someone can check it.
Mayor, I believe you have a motion in a second. Any further discussions?
Due to the day of the meeting is up on time?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it. I do the, the day of the meeting.
Any other discussion? All those are favored?
Aye.
Five to zero. Moving on to tab number 12, Lake County Folk Festival. That's with community services.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I have exciting news, I believe. City staff has approached several months ago from members of the Public Arts and Music Board, or PAM, I will refer to the PAM, the rest of the delivery, requesting that the city consider being the host site. Can you hear me okay? I feel like...
I can hear you, but I don't know if they're...
I don't feel like I'm very loud. Okay, thank you. That the city, better, thank you, Michael, that the city consider serving as the host site for the annual Folk Festival, the Lake County Folk Festival, which has been held in the city of Eustis for 22 years. And I think they've outgrown the boundaries of that city and they're looking for a bigger venue. And they're actually looking for a partnership, kind of a unique hybrid partnership, I would call it, whereby at the city, we organize events, city staff. There are outside organizers who organize events and come to the city and host their events here. In this particular instance, the group is here, by the way, the city staff would work in tandem with the board and in a beautiful partnership. I outlined some highlights of their request and what we would do in terms of funding the event, the arts and cultural program here at the city. I have a line item budget for that, as you know. It would be funded through that line item budget. Typically every year, I do a variety of things with that budget. I host art meeting receptions, exhibitions, I work with the African-American Heritage Festival and we do a kickoff cultural event the night before the festival. So we do a variety of things. We did the Beatles event through the Arts and Cultural Budget. So in the next fiscal year, this, excuse me, return fiscal year, we would host the event from that budget. And additionally, the group has a few funding sources too. So that's, that's what we would propose. We preemptively met before meeting you tonight to sort of raise some a little bit. And certainly the decision is ultimately yours, whether or not this partnership proceeds. But we are an independent district, so it certainly makes sense to bring another layer of entertainment and culture to our downtown. We have, we've picked the date of October 3rd, 2020. The event itself, musicians would be brought in from all over the state of Florida and they would be performing at a variety of locations in the downtown, to include in the restaurants, those participating restaurants who would like to have musicians in the restaurant for the day, performing throughout the day. They would, they would be in the gazebo, they would be across the street in the square, they would be in the park, just peppered throughout the town so if you could visualize how that would look and feel. We would bring in a visual art component as well. So we would have a folk art exhibit in City Hall. We would have artists painting and working. They might be across the street in the square, they might be on the veranda in front of City Hall. So it's just layers and layers of art, all kinds of art, visual and performing art. This festival would retain its name because we're the county seat, so it would be, continue to be called the Lake County Folk Festival, which would, which made sense to us. The PAM group would continue to sell their branded shirt. They sell it every year, it's part of the event and everyone, they buy that new shirt every year. Community Development Director Mike Fitzpatrick, if you don't know this, is an accomplished musician as well as our attorney. And Michael is well versed in different genres of music and folk, folk music, and he would serve as the selection committee as well. So he would be advising and selecting along with the group. So it would just be everyone kind of working together, this beautiful sort of partnership. So that's essentially it. What we're, what I'm seeking tonight is for your consideration of such a partnership. It is entirely up to you. We are recommending that you discuss it and you advise us in which direction you'd like us to take. And certainly the board members would be happy to hop up to the podium and answer any of your questions that you might have. I think that's it. Thank you.
Well, before we get started, would any of the members of the Public Arts and Music Board like to address the council, would public, before we take you to public input? Please just state your name for the director.
Hi, my name's Kathy Wallace. I've been coordinating the festival for the past five years. As they said, this festival's been in Lake County, remember, this will be '23. And it started at Old McDonald's Farm. So it started as a very small thing on hay bales, bloomed to audience coming in of 5,000 to 7,000 people from outside. So it's not exactly a tiny little festival, it's not huge, but it is one of the top five folk festivals in the state of Florida. And the musicians are all Florida musicians and if you come to the festival, you'll find out they are very talented and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to public input, we may call you back up, okay? All right, Ms. LaRotta?
Denise LaRotta, Royal Harbor. I think this is a fantastic thing that the Folk Festival wants to move to Taveras. I think it'll be a great thing to have in here. I do have a question and Tammy, you, you answered part of it, but when I saw that the budget, which is, the full budget is $9,000, right, for the whole year?
Is that correct? Just shy, $12,000.
$12,000, okay. Well, so out of the $12,000, you're going to take $9,000 and devote it to this festival?
Yes.
I would then be concerned about the things that are not going to be occurring that have been occurring in the city. Particularly, as you know, I'm very interested in the art shows that you have here frequently and the other things. So that is my concern, that that much of the budget would be used for one new event in the city and therefore other things would have to not occur. Thank you.
Ms. Rogers, would you respond to that?
I would, I would. What I will continue, be able to do, continue to, Denise is a great supporter of the arts here, is still have the four, we have opening receptions that have been every year, annually for years, and still support the African-American Heritage Festival. So there's money still in the budget for those activities as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Next is Ms. Aitken.
Diana Aitken, 714 North St. Clair Abrams Avenue. I just want to hear it the same as Ms. LaRotta. I'm a supporter and I'm excited that we're going to have, I love folk music and any festival and the bringing people to downtown and enjoy what we have to offer is a good plus for the city. Again, I'm with Ms. LaRotta on the budget and the cost involved for our other programs and that concern there. Thank you so much.
Next we have Mr. Eric Huster. Please remember to stay on topic, you have three minutes.
David Sardar is how you put it.
I can't read your writing.
I know, I had to do it quickly. No, I love, love folk music. I listen to James Taylor quite a bit and you started out, I mean, how can you not want a folk music event? And Wallace, God bless you for having heard of that and, you know, my brother is a villager and he brings people, 15 or 16 villagers, out, you know, through the Mount Door, Canal, comes out to Taveras and loves to come to Taveras and eat and dine. And by God, the village people would love to be here from all over. And, you know, you talk about people not in the area to public comment. By God, you know, I think it's a great idea to let anybody public comment because you are the seaplane camp of the world and everybody likes to notice that, to see the seaplane. I have vegetables up at your festival, they're wonderful. And to have a folk event, by God, I was at the Mount Door Christmas break, they had beautiful Bobby Blackman, a friend of mine, and he's a blues player, and they had a great crowd there. So you, you know, you're more than welcome. You'll have thousands of people right in your streets and the restaurants and be so happy. By God, it's a great idea, I think. You know, that's my opinion.
Thank you very much.
What you can do today can improve all your tomorrow's, I think, it's a great idea.
All right. Which I believe that concludes all of our public inputs. I'll go ahead and close public comments and I'll open up to you, Council.
I'll start. Tamara, wonderful idea, it's excellent. My concern was where the $9,000 were coming from because I couldn't put my finger on that item. Thank you for the clarification and I'm glad you're maintaining the square, that's very important as Denise mentioned. My question is, will Rocktoberfest not happen because that's typically the first Saturday in October? Are we doing away with Rocktoberfest?
Not at all. They will be the second, October's a very busy month.
Yes.
October 3rd would be Folk, October 10th, I believe, Bob, is Rocktoberfest, I think that's what Sherri told me, and October 30th is Boo.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you for coming to Taveras.
Mr. Schengler?
Yeah, that was one of my concerns as well with the funding. I just wanted to make sure we were still going to be able to do the events that we were able to do in the past, that's great. I like the idea, you know, it's bringing a varied group to our downtown area. I think, you know, I'm all about partnerships, I think it's great, especially when you get, you know, different people involved. I do have one question for the group. I see that you were in Eustis for 22 years, so what made you decide to come to America Seaplane City?
We like to be, we like to be in some of the venues, be in some of the restaurants and stuff, and the city of Eustis no longer has the restaurants to be in. Just to give you an example, two weeks before the festival, 1884 closed. Now, what do you do? We've had that type of situation several years in a row. It's very frustrating and, and very upsetting. So we were looking for an area that has a lot of venues we can use. It's not like we have trouble getting performers, getting people here to see it, we have problems with venues. And here there's a lot of restaurants that have music already in them, they're already set up for music, and if we could have a couple of, one of the things we didn't talk about was we have jam tents, which are very popular and people come and sit, they don't have to be musicians, they can come, put a tent out there on the lawn and you'll have 40, 50 people there having a jam. And it's such an interesting experience. So that's why we have to move out of Eustis because there is no venues for us. Does that answer it?
Yes, it does, thank you. Sounds like a wonderful fit, so thank you very much for considering Taveras, I appreciate it.
Mr. Schengler?
Ms. Rogers, you know, we have a balanced budget, right? Budgets, what you take in, what you spend. If you're taking $9,000 and shifting it over here, we have to do something, right? Like, aren't we going to lose? I'm curious what we're going to lose because I don't want to lose anything.
And I love that you're interested and concerned, that's fabulous to hear that, actually, excuse me. When I did this past year, we had the Beatles event. So I put a large portion of the Arts and Cultural Budget toward kind of an event that attracted, I don't know, there's a couple thousand people a year. So that big, we won't do a Beatles this time, we will do this instead. So kind of do visual art here every quarter, or is that right, every three months, support this event and then one big, big thing, big. So that's how I've always broken it down. A couple of years ago, right after the hurricane, we did the Ultimate Art Project and that was across the street, in the square, excuse me, layers and layers of art. So that was my, what am I going to say, the big part of my year was creating that event. So instead of those two things, it would, that money would be drawn toward this particular Arts and Cultural Event.
Thank you, Mayor, that was a great answer. I saw on the tabulated list that was provided to me, a paper copy of the agenda, there's right in the middle part, it says we're going to spend about $9,000 on this for arts and musicians, artists and musicians. But then down below it also says that we'll have to support it logistically with trash cans and portlets. Is that in addition to that $9,000 or is that included?
Because it's, it's halfway between a city event and outside organized or event. So we are sponsoring, hosting, I hope I'm using the wrong words, but we are part of coordinating the event. So it's almost like the city is putting the event on with support from, you know, because they no longer wish to organize and manage the event. So they've asked us to not only be the host site, where it's physically here, but we're managing the event and they will be supporting us. So it essentially has become our event. So it essentially has become our event, will become our event if you take us.
Okay, I think it's cool. The $9,000, is that going to like artists and musicians? And then in addition to that, we're also going to spend a bunch of money on portlets having them brought in and taken away and all that.
The answer is yes. That money is provided annually by Waste Management. So they provide up to, how much money? A year? Yeah, more like $25,000. So Waste Management allocates around $25,000 to support us with portlets coming and going for events throughout the year.
Is that going to mess us up if we start spending additional money on this event? Is that going to mess us up for money that should be going? You know, because everything's like set out, exactly where it comes from, exactly where it goes.
I think every year, we have a little surplus at the end, right? So I think we're going to be fine on this one. We will watch it carefully, you know. Some years, we have just a little less portlets for an event. Some years, a little bit more. But I don't think we've ever run out of our allocation.
One year we did.
One year we did.
Fully unexpected.
Yeah, so we watch it, we manage it, to make sure the number of portlets we have for the number of events are sufficient. Sometimes we hit it, sometimes we miss it.
Those are all the questions I had. Thank you for your answer.
Ms. Vister?
Yes, and I love this event. I go every year. I've gone forever. I love it. So when I heard that y'all were, you know, inquiring on coming here, I was excited about it. I always talk about $9,000. Isn't that going to be in the next year's fiscal budget? It's not even in this year's.
And it's a very good observation. No, no, here's what happens. Because you have to start entering into contracts this fiscal year, that money will be in this fiscal year, even though the event, I guess this is okay. Take place minutes.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I understand that.
In three days, yeah.
I just, but there's a way that we can, we can swing the money here and there. Okay, yeah, that's really all I had to say. Welcome to Tavarez.
And all I have to say is I was really tempted to wear my Folk Festival t-shirt today. But I didn't, because I thought I needed to be formal, since it's my first full meeting as mayor. So if anybody would like to have a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
And the motion's to approve?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero.
Thank you.
Welcome to Tavarez. That brings us to Tac 13, Amendment to Extend Current Waste Disposal Agreement with Covanta, late 2. Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. On January 31st, 2014, City of Tavarez entered agreement with Covanta to provide location of residential waste disposal services with expiration date September 30th, 2019. Tidings for the first year were 32.5% for the disposal portion of municipal collection operation. In addition, a renewable energy credit of $5 per time was applied, resulting in net charges of $27.5 per contract. Per the original contract, each subsequent year would have annual percentage increase based on the consumer rights payment, if pending, not to exceed 2.5% per contract year. The record also have annual percentage increase based on the CPI for if pending, with a maximum of 2.5% per contract year. The staff has negotiated an extension to the contract. This proposed extension amends the original agreement about extending the contract an additional five years for an additional, for an expiration date of September 30th, 2024. It also reduces the tidings from 35-day minimum time down to 34.50%. The recping will remain the same at $5, as depicted in the, the annual CPI remains the same up to a maximum of 2.5% per contract year. No change to the customer's annual fee structure is proposed. Previously, the council adopted an ordinance setting the fee structure to the CPI as well. CPI increases offset the increased cost of fuel, capital outlay, personnel, resulting in a fiscally balanced business management policy. You have two options before you, to accept the amendment or not to accept. Staff recommends to accept. Not have the input that you have.
All right, well, do you have public input from Mr. Sardar?
Yeah, but this is right up my alley. I'm just a custodian that certified water damage, perfectly certified, for over a decade. Waste, you know, ice floes, only trash litters. Please put it up in your, your Public Works Department. And by God, I met the new Public Works Director in Orlando. He doesn't have a card yet, but I got his picture, and he'd like to know you. I told him I know the Public Works in Lainey Lake, CT or PT, and in Leesburg, another DC. And I went up to, I went to your office. And, you know, waste, you got to do it right. You got to work with a company that does it right. And, you know, if you're satisfied with the one you got, you stick with them. If they have to go up a little bit in price, hey, things get tough. You can get a bit, I've been a business man, Sardar Services Incorporated. One call does it all. I work 24 hours a day. And I learned, you got to put 23 and a half hours, otherwise they expect you to be at overtime. You know, I was in business for over 25 years. And then during my life, when she takes the bowls, black rocks, and do similar jobs. I've been a florist for many years.
Mr. Sardar, do you have anything in particular you want to speak on as to what we're voting on today?
Well, I say, stay with a company that does the service for it.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, I believe that it closes our public comment, unless anybody else is interested. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and take it to Council. Anybody have any questions or comments? I guess my comment is, Mr. Dillon, is this a good deal?
It is.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero. That moves us on to Tac 14, Resolution 2019-09 Fiscal Sustainability Plan for CRA Stormwater Improvement Project. Utilities, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. The subject title is Resolution 2019-09 Fiscal Sustainability Plan for CRA Stormwater Improvement Project. Objective is to consider approval of the fiscal sustainability plan in Resolution 2019-09 for the Downtown CRA Stormwater Improvement Project. Previously, council approved all the businesses needing to go into place to do the Eco Park Brew Street project. We got loan and grants. In order to fulfill the requirements of the grants, we have to have this sustainability plan in place. We have one written, we have a resolution written. You can approve it or not approve it. I recommend, staff recommends that you approve it. There is no fiscal impact associated with approval, and our lawyers ask for you. If you have any questions, I'll be there.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I did not receive any audience input forms, so, Mr. Sardar, if you're going to speak on it, you have to stay on topic. You can't talk about how you like water and it's all. So please state your name and.
David Sardar, 66 W. Green Drive, Eco Park Shore, Waste Water. I'm right up my alley. I'm certified in water damage. I know what gray water is. And, you know, I believe.
Anything in particular in the fiscal sustainability plan?
Well, I want you to know, I'm such a concerned citizen that, you know, I've asked to be on a water management district board, appointed by the governor, and they sent me a literature already, which got a bolder, brighter, better future for us. About 46 governors, the governor is sadist. And I want you to know, you know, I, it's right up my alley. We have to take care of wastewater. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Sardar. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comments.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Same.
Anybody have any further comments or discussion, other than I really like the plant, looks like we're in great shape? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero. Moving on to new business. I don't believe we have any new business, from what it looks like, so old business. I don't see any old business. Moving on to Ms. Burley with Historical Perspective.
I don't know why we need this cold air blowing on us on a day like today. My ears and my nose are frozen.
Ms. Burley?
Ms. Burley.
Ms. Burley, can you put the microphone closer to you, so we can hear you? You're so soft spoken.
In 1990, 6,000 lights plus will go on during light up Tavarez. Approximately 6,000 sparkling lights in the trees at Woo Park, plus lights on Main Street will be turned on during the light up Tavarez celebration, December 6th at 5:30 PM in the park. Mayor Eugene Glenn will serve as minister of ceremonies for the program, which is scheduled to include members of the Tavarez High School band and several choirs. Refreshments of punch and cookies will be served by the junior women's club. It was the Azalea Garden Club, two years ago, initiated the campaign for holiday lighting Tavarez. This group and the Chamber of Congress coordinated fundraising efforts for the lights prior to last year's first light up of Tavarez. Last year, Mrs. Bogus headed a campaign that resulted in 18 decorated Christmas trees in the downtown business district. Mrs. Bogus hopes that soon after the first of the year, plans can begin for the next year's light up fund drive. If funds are raised earlier and explains, the city parks and recreation department puts up the lights and arranges the annual lights up celebration, will have more time to plan and purchase and put up the lights. This year's fund drive brought contributions of approximately $1,000, with $300 from the Azalea Garden Club, $150 from the Tavarez Women's Club, $100 from the Tavarez Recreation Association, and $100 from the Lioness Club, and $100 from the Fox Run homeowners.
Thank you, Ms. Burley. So that brings us to audience to be heard. Once again, Mr. Sardar, you're up. Do you want to?
I'm going to pass on this one.
Thank you. It's all right, thank you. Please, let's not, thank you. Moving on to Ms. Aitken.
Diana Aitken, 714 North St. Clair Abrams Avenue. Am I correct that because of the approval, that I don't have to fill out for audience to be heard? Or do I? I do not, okay. Just want to make sure I'm in the next, I just want to say, thank you again. Great job. There needs to be a correct spelling of St. Clair Abrams in our minutes. I noticed second time in a row, C-L-A-I-R, and not the E on it. And that, I subscribe to text updates with the, any updates on job postings, events, important notifications for any disaster, storm related. When you guys mentioned about the board and not having enough, or not having turn-ins to be a board appointed, I didn't get any updates. And I don't know if that is included in your updates when you need a position within the city on boards? But I did not get any updates. I went through my updates and I did not see any. Maybe we can get a better response from the community if we have those updates available via text when something is needed. Not quite sure if the admin.
Bob's already gone, and I would have to leave that Mr. Dill to respond to you. I'm sure he would like to do it after the meeting.
Okay, that'd be fine.
We'll look into that.
Okay, it would just be nice if, maybe I can sort of somehow. But I just want to say, thank you, Mayor Bogus. Great job on your first meeting held as mayor officially. Great job. Congratulations, and thanks again. And that's all I have to say. And then, thank you, Ms. Aitken.
And last but surely not least, Mr. Buck. And listen closely, Mr. Dillon.
Yeah, excuse me, I, I had throat cancer, so it's hard to understand outside for me. So I got a different accent. I, I was going to lose weight, so I started walking. I walked down the Eagle Park, Eagle Park, and up Main Street, and then back down the other side. I've done this for three weeks. I picked up, just on Main Street, 18 pails of trash. I picked it up, it shrunk, it, a long sidewalk. I, I picked up, I asked, I went to, I called the town garage to be. And I asked them if they could please pick up the pack. They need to mark in a pack lift. We'll send somebody right now. There was fish on the sidewalk, there was dog feces on the sidewalk, and there was all kinds of stuff in the water. I was there the day they sent them down. They rode on this two-wheeler, a four-wheeler thing. There was two of them. They used that as a race car, and didn't pick up one thing. I said, you can't depend on them. I picked all that stuff up, and then I walked over four miles and they went in this town. I thought, if I picked up trash two days in a row, I could just walk without a pay up and a pickup. You can't do it, because today, I still get a pay up. And I go, so I'm running back down here to the end of the jail. I, I've talked to several people in the town, and I, I don't get much help, other than our daughter upstairs here. She, the last three days, she's been trying to give me numbers and help me out. I don't even know where the mayor's office is.
I don't have an office, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's why they don't know where it is. Where they have those, uh, I believe, I don't know, the seagull races, they have down here, that's a mess. There's bottle cats, and, and this, oh, uh, casino bots. And I picked up a bunch of them, and nobody cleans it up. I can't take care of the whole town. If they pick up Main Street, maybe I could do smaller. Nobody does. The trash barrels, and every bus stop down Main Street, I'm running over. I've asked, have them picked up? Right down here at the town, another night, we'll put in an order. So I think, if I come to this meeting, so at least, somebody's going to get hurt, hurt that, and I'm doing this, I'm the goodness of my heart. And I, I did want a box of those gloves like Dr. Dweare, just because of picking up trash. Ah, Laurie's Restaurant, I stopped there, because I was hoping she was going to be there. She wanted, but her helpers, they gave me a handful of them. So for all my work, if nobody's going to help, I'm not going to do it. I like this place I live in, Tavarez Home Waters, behind the jail. And I'm only here for six months, so I, you know, I can't vote on nothing, but let's see if I got anything else to say. I'm right three minutes up.
But I'm really glad that you came, and I believe Mr. Dillon will make the time to talk to you after the meeting. We're almost done. And then, if you'd be willing to stick around and speak with Mr. Dillon, I think he can work with you.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. Please, Mr. Sardar, we're so close. All right, I believe that. Is there anyone else from the audience to be heard? Ms. LaRotta?
Denise LaRotta, I think the gentleman ahead of me should be named Tavarez Citizen of the Year for what he's doing in keeping the city clean. At the last meeting, I misspoke. I had stated that two candidates for office had the same treasure, who was a family member, and that was incorrect information, so I apologize for saying that. I wanted to correct my mistake. And also, I'd like to say, I just love the blue and white Christmas lights at the entrance to Tavarez. The, I do, I do like the mixed lights on Main Street much better than the red ones last year. But I would hope that next year, you might consider just blue and white, because it's Tavarez colors and it is beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaRotta. Would you like to come forward and speak?
Yes, please.
Get your name and address for the record.
Jake Cunningham, 311 Woodview Drive. The blue and white Christmas lights at the front do look great. My son loves the colored lights. My son loves the colored lights going to the city, so I appreciate that. Hope we do that again next year. Thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Santoro's already coming up. Mr. Sardar?
You can go for your turn.
Yes.
Gary Santoro, Red Harbor. Mayor, just want to congratulate you on being mayor. I know you did a fantastic job, just as you do in a courtroom. If you, if you've ever sat in our court and watched Ms. Bogus in action, you'd really appreciate how she moves things along. We couldn't do the things that we do in that courtroom. And it's an honor being your bailiff. Thank you.
Mr. Santoro, before you walk away, sir, I wasn't intending to give me to you earlier when I said like...
Yeah, you are.
I just wanted to make sure that I actually said that to you. I didn't mean it that way, I just wanted you to know that. Matter of fact.
And then, Mr. Santorial, Mr. Sardar, please keep it brief and on topic.
I would, you know, and I was here the other day when your Christmas tree was being decorated by your events coordinator, and she did a wonderful job. My wife, being a florist, and she's a Paul Foll Harris Rotarian, because she can do everybody, do my wife's and cell, own two flower shops in Louisville, although, and I've met a florist with her, I've been with her for 30 years, I'm decorating my Vickers house four years in a row. We decorate just like you decorated there. It was beautiful, and I appreciate all that that you do, all the decorations that you do, and your first day of mayor. Am I allowed? I don't drink, but these buds are for you.
I'll see you at the end of the meeting. Anyone else for audience to be heard? All right, well, I'm gonna close audience to be heard and move on to reports. Tac 16, City Administrator.
Thank you. Just good public input. We're listening, we're hearing you, we're taking notes, and know that when we hear you, it is being distributed to our staff and to the people that, you know, are out, you know, from picking up trash to lights and everything, so the public input is welcomed. We need that. We get focused on what we're doing, and we need your public input so that we can direct our limited resources to where they need to be. So thank you for that. The only other thing I guess I'd like to offer or think about, or have you all think about, and I was gonna wait till next budget year when we talk about the budget, which will be in February, but Christmas is here, and there's a parade coming on Saturday, and the square is gonna be full with interesting things. Thank you, Tamara, for doing that. And one of the things that I'm hopeful that you will discuss during the next budget cycle is a Christmas village, being there for the three weeks after the parade starts. And the reason I bring this up today for you to think about is Taveri's pride itself of being creative and innovative and proactive. And as you think of that square and you see the square during the parade Tamara is leading us with this Saturday, and you think, what would it look like to have a small craft fair there, a big tree, Christmas music, the big man there, a couple of, maybe Thursday, maybe Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and, you know, 10 tents on one side, 10 tents on the other side, food on one side, might be hot chocolate, or might be craft vendors, and you had it there every weekend for three weeks, and we created a Christmas village in our downtown in that square. One of the things that's been, I've been challenged to think about, and I'm asking all you to think about, is what would be the centerpiece? What would be in the middle of that square? And you think about, well, would you put a skating rink in there? Too expensive, too much, not niche and wow. What would a bonfire look like, you know, every, every day? People come, roast marshmallows, huh, it takes kids running around, getting hurt, someone's gotta manage it. So I'm challenging each of you to think about, if a Christmas village is something that this community would want to have during the three weeks after the parade is launched in the square, and you were challenged with a centerpiece that people would want to come down to, what would that centerpiece be? And when you think of that, would it be something that was niche, wow, creative, unique, manageable, not too expensive? So I'm leaving you with that. The reason I'm doing it now is Christmas is around the corner, the event is coming up, and as you go out there, it might get your creative juices thinking. All of you are creative. I know each and every one of you, you've, you've come up with some creative ideas, and I'm challenging you to come up with that, should that be something we do next year. That's all I have.
Ms. Nover.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Chief?
Over here.
Mr. Chief?
Yes, just have a brief update for council on Sea Plain Bay's Marina Project. As you recall, last month, the council approved a contract on hassle or design building for the removal of island space of this project. We have executed that contract, and a notice procedure is going to be issued for the 6th of January. So in the new year, it'll begin that process. We will be receiving their guaranteed maximum cost. They have completed the first phase of the project, which is the design and engineering. They have received bids from all their contractors for the construction phase. Will be receiving that in the February, and I'll be meeting with them on Friday, and we anticipate, subject to the insurance carrier review and approval in the coming week, bringing that to council next week for approval and award of the construction phase of contract and getting them worked. So coming into the new year, that, that project will be in full swing, and the Portland will be moving, and the bill will be on.
Not next week, but in two weeks.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks, that's all I have.
Mr. Dillon?
I'll be to report, thank you.
Ms. Pueblis?
I'm going to read and invite you all to the employee Christmas party on Tuesday. While curating, so I will forward you the information.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes, I agree to state the obvious. Anthony, you did a great job. That's for sure. But, you know, this Saturday, as John had mentioned, we are testing the waters on that little village he dreams of. There will be eight little playhouses built in the middle of the square by Haptet and Anthony and their sponsorship teams. So they picked us this year, so tickled to have them, and we're breaking into a machine, and a vendor is doing cocoa, and we've got market lights to create the little feeling of walkabout village, very tiny, but, and the parade, I have to tell you, I don't know what's happened, but it has exploded. We have 180 units, over 200 vehicles. I don't know how many walkers. It's the biggest parade we've ever had. They are coming out of the woodwork, wanting to participate. It is a good feeling, guys. We are all psyched. Scott Aldrich, Scott Sandup, he's the superhero. He's doing this all the way back, yeah. All of our work and details, and he is not rival at all. He's cool, handling. So anyway, hope to see everybody there. Thank you very much, and thank you to council for your participation as well.
Ms. Houghton, she says she doesn't have a voice, and she has nothing to say. Mr. Fitzgerald. All right, um, Ms. Voice.
Kirby used to end the meeting with a day of, what was the, you know, was it Ice Cream Day, or Beer Day, or what have you? I think I'll be doing a positive quote at the end of every meeting. Today's positive quote is, be mindful, be grateful, be positive, be true, and be kind. And that quote is from Roy T. Bennett. Thank you.
Mr. Singer?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the parade. It's great to hear that we have all those participants. Very exciting. The only thing I had to report, I just want to say, you know, thank you to the Taveri's High School Choir for coming in this afternoon. Did a wonderful job, and if that doesn't put you in the Christmas spirit, then I don't know what will. So that's all I have there.
Mr. Seatonson?
Uh, real quick, I didn't catch whether it was Buck or Beck, but Mr....
Buck, Buck. Uncle Buck.
All right, Uncle Buck. Sir, number one, I noticed you have, thank you very, very much for what you did for all of us. We all appreciate that. And number two, just person to person, not even about city council, thank you, sir, for picking up that trash. That's really cool, 18 pounds of trash. Just me as a person, thank you very much, sir. Me sitting on city council, certainly thank you, sir, for everything that you did. I think that's super cool. And then the only other thing I have is Mr. Fitzpatrick. I didn't know you played a national fan, I'm dying to know. Would you share with all of us?
I used to.
All right, Vice Mayor Miskin?
Um, nothing other than I'm gonna miss the employee. I always enjoy coming to the employee Christmas party. I'm gonna miss that this year. I've got some already planned that I'm gonna be doing that day, and I'm just glad this meeting's almost over.
All right. I don't know if I can come to the Christmas party. I'm still waiting to find out if I have a trial next week, so. And of course, you have the biggest parade ever, for the first parade I've missed in forever. I'm like, that's why it's huge, and you know how much I love parades. I'm tempted to be like, nah, you just come really late to my own party, so I can make the parade. Other than, everyone comes up to Light Up Taveri's, it's one of my favorite events. And with no other business, I'm gonna close this meeting.